The council to order, council meeting and councillor Candace Bouchard, Mayor Pro Tem from Ward Nine, the mayor has a conflict tonight, so I will be chairing tonight's council meeting. Do we have, I'm doing a prayer today?
We do not.
We do not. Okay, if we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance. Councillor Brown?
Would you like to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Ready?
Yes. Mayor Pro Tem Bouchard.
Here.
Mayor Boule.
Excused.
Councillor Brown.
Here.
Councillor Champlin.
Present.
Councillor Fantasy.
Present.
Councillor Greedy Sexton.
Excused.
Councillor Keach.
Excused.
Councillor Credit.
Here.
Councillor Matson.
Excused.
Councillor McGlaughlin.
Excused.
Councillor McNamara.
Present.
Councillor Nian.
Present.
Councillor Pierce.
Here.
Councillor Rice Hawkins.
Here.
And Councillor Todd.
Here.
With that, we do have a quorum. Okay, approval of the meeting minutes from August eighth.
So moved.
Second.
The motion has been moved by councillor Nian, seconded by councillor Todd. Any discussion?
Abstained since I was absent.
Councillor Sandra Rice Hawkins abstains and she was absent. And, okay, a motion. Is made and seconded? Yes, it was, it was made by councillor Nian, moved to approve the minutes and seconded by councillor Todd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Seeing none. One abstain, so it passes with one abstention. Okay, agenda overview by the Mayor Pro Tem. So, we have no public hearings tonight. We do have a couple of presentations and we do have just recently items that were pulled from the consent calendar. Councillor Brown pulled item number 24 off of consent and councillor Rice Hawkins pulled item number 28. And the recu, councillor Brown will be recusing herself from consent items 22, 28, and 34. And is there a motion on the consent? Move or approval?
Second.
So the motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none. Consent passes with those items that have been pulled and councillor's bringing the recusal. So, I went a little out of order, but I would like to recognize a resolution and recognition of the service of Catherine H. Temchek. Catherine, thank you so much for all your service. If you could come forward, councillor Nian would like to read.
Good to see you, Kathy. Everybody hear me? On behalf of the Mayor of the City Council, I'm going to be the following proclamation. It's Resolution Number 9488, City of Concord, in the year of our Lord 2022. Resolution in recognition of the services of Catherine H. Temchek. The City of Concord resolves as follows. Whereas Catherine H. Temchek joined the City of Concord as Director of Real Estate Assessment on December 29, 2003, and whereas Catherine H. Temchek has been a faithful and loyal employee of the City of Concord for over 18 years with the Assessing Department, and whereas Catherine H. Temchek during her tenure has assigned values to all taxable and exempt property in the City of Concord, and has acted as valuation consultant and appraiser to the city, manager, and department heads with professionalism and integrity. And whereas Catherine H. Temchek successfully conducted an annual statistical update of all city properties going above and beyond state requirements in order to keep city property values updated, and whereas Catherine H. Temchek has kept up to date on the potential impacts and consequences of changes to state laws, rules, and regulations regarding property assessment and taxation, it has provided testimony on proposed legislation, rules, and regulations on behalf of the City of Concord as necessary. And whereas Catherine H. Temchek has served as staff support person to the City of Concord Board of Assessors, and whereas Catherine H. Temchek has served on the Equalization Standard Board, it has served as a county board member, second vice president, first vice president, president, past president, at-large director, alternative at-large director, member of the Ethics Education Scholarship Legislative and Nominating Committees, representative for the International AAO and Northeast Regional AAO, and member of the Ad hoc Committee with Tax Collectors for the New Hampshire Association of Assessing Officials. Now therefore be it resolved by the Mayor and members of the City of Concord that we hereby record our appreciation for the many years of service of Catherine H. Temchek to the City of Concord, our esteem for her ability and professional commitment, and our respect for her integrity, high character, and strong leadership, and be it further resolved that we hereby acknowledge that the service and presence of Catherine H. Temchek will be truly missed by the City Council, the city administration, and the entire Concord community, and we all extend our best wishes to her during her well-deserved retirement. Signed this day, September 12, 2022, passed by James P. Boule.
Enjoy your retirement. You know you're going to be missed.
Thanks so much for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. You've got your chance to say a few words you know now.
I just would like to say that it's been an enjoyable 18 years. It's been a hard 18 years many times, but I think at the end of the day, I can look back and say I did my best for the city of Concord.
Yay.
Yes, so the next item is a presentation by Denise and Paul Pulio, Kauasak Band of the Pennecook Abenaki People.
Kwai Nito Bak and Delawesin Denise Pulio Sagama Squaw, Wadelawesin Paul Pulio Sagamo, Kauasak Band of the Pennecook Abenaki People, Ni'ona Aion Odena Kunip'i. Hello, friends. My name is Denise Pulio. I'm the head female speaker, and this is Paul Pulio, the head male speaker-in-chief of the Kauasak Band of the Pennecook Abenaki People. We come to you today from our ancient Pennecook village of Odena Kunip'i, which translates to the Village of the Narrowing of Waters, now known as Alton, New Hampshire. We come here today to pay homage and thank you for adopting Indigenous Peoples' Day and by gifting the city with a tribal flag to fly on Indigenous Peoples' Day or any other day you seem fit. Along with that gift of a flag, we have a gift, a re-gift of another flag. Earlier today, unbeknownst to many of you, our tribal flag was stolen off the, off the parade of flags in downtown Concord. We're incredibly thankful to the Concord Police Department for their quick action and stepping in to resolve this issue without incident and have the flag here to give back to the town, to the city. So we thank Concord Police Department for their swift action today and for resolving a potential issue without issue. So with that, we would also like to gift two letters. One, there's a copy here for each one of you. One is to thank you for adopting the tribal flag, and the other one is a description on what this flag actually means. So before we leave you.
Since we have this one open.
We're going to explain real quickly.
This one was up for a short time period, apparently.
Yeah, very hot item.
Literally.
We're the people of the White Pines. This is a symbol of course, and the three rivers, which are important to us, which is the Connecticut, the Merrimack, and the Escala, and all the tributaries. And the rising sun represents the Wabanaki, which is people of the Donlin, and here's the water, and these are reflections in the water of the canoe, and it also means we're keepers of the tradition because these are called wisdom curls. The corners are actually like clan symbols showing unity and love in, in individual families. So it's a very peaceful flag. It's all explained into the, into the description we've given you here. And like we say, we give you a great thanks for, this should go back up on the parade route, I guess.
Maybe you want to try zip ties?
And hopefully we have enough copies. I know we made 12 copies, but I hope that anybody wants one, we can always give that back to you. And that's it. We just give you a lot of thanks. We say, "Gisileneet," great thanks. We went through the process of Indigenous Peoples' Day, and we, we want to honor that by giving you one of our flags, and you can use it for cultural events and, and on Indigenous Peoples' Day in the future.
Okay? Thank you so much. So we, the council's just been gifted some Abenaki flag and, two flags, and we would, would like a motion to accept that gift.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Chaplin, seconded by councillor Todd. All, any, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those seeing none? Motion passes, and thank you once again. Very honored. Thank you. Okay, so we have no public hearings tonight, so we have no public hearing action. Do we have any reports or anything?
We had one, but it got withdrawn by the folks who wanted to do it, so they'll probably be before us next month.
Okay. We have no unfinished business, and I believe now we're at comments and requests by Mayor and City Councillors, councillor Champlin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. I just wanted to note two upcoming events in the community that I think everybody should be interested in, hopefully are interested in. The first is, this coming Sunday is Concord's Multicultural Festival, which is a great annual event. It, that is Sunday, September 18th, here at Keech Park on the Heights. It is going to start and kick off at 10:30 with a parade of flags, followed by opening ceremonies, which will be, I believe, led by our own Denise and Paul Pulio. And there's just a ton of things. I was up there last year, as a number of us around the table were. It's just a great event. There are going to be food vendors open from 11 to 4. You better get there early because the food went quickly last year, and we're talking about, you know, food from all, all our cultures, you know, from Chinese food, you know, Latin American food, Nepalese food. It's just, it's just a cornucopia. Also, there'll be all sorts of performances, and performances from our Nepalese community, Burundians, West Africans, you know, Latin American countries, Colombia, Argentina. It's a wonderful day, and I urge folks to attend if they can, and particularly bring the kids, because I think it's a great introduction to our multicolored, multicultural city here in Concord. The second event I wanted to mention, and I'll try to be briefer, is that the following weekend, on the 24th and 25th, Saturday and Sunday, we are going to be having Concord's Capital Arts Fest. This is going to be on South Main Street, around the area of the Capital Center for the Arts, up to the Bank of New Hampshire stage. It is just going to be a great day. The anchor is going to be 32 Craft, Juried Crafts People, who are members of the League of New Hampshire Craftsman. We're also going to have free music on both days. By the way, it's 10 to 5 on Saturday, 10 to 4 on Sunday. The key headliners on Saturday will be Firefall, which is an iconic 1970s band, and then on Sunday, the Screaming Orphans, which is a contemporary, all-sister contemporary Celtic and rock band. There are also going to be performances by local arts organizations and cultural organizations, the New Hampshire Scottish Pipe Band, Cindy Chounce Barakia, Flava Dance, Concord Coachman, which is a barbershop quartet, ensembles from Concord Community Music School, and the list goes on and on. There'll also be food truck food from Chabawaba and Cole's Kitchen and Holy Moly, and Batulo's Kitchen, and the Capital Center will have a beer garden. So it's going to be a great weekend to get out with the family again and enjoy Concord. So put those on your calendar.
All right. Thank you, councillor. Councillor Credit.
Thank you. I want to make sure that the city is aware of our deep gratitude to New Hampshire Chronicle, which this week is featuring Beaver Meadow Golf Course as its cut-ins announced for the show this week. They came out a couple of weeks ago, and they were so gracious to the number of players that were there, kids from the high school team, kid from the college, kids from the college team, plus our regular members and other people. It was great to see the hosts there, and it was really a part of a celebration, continuing celebration of our 125th anniversary of Beaver Meadow Golf Course being the oldest municipal chorus here in the state of New Hampshire, and we want to make sure we thank them. Of course, we all missed it tonight because we were here at the council meeting tomorrow. It'll be election night. Some night this week we'll get to catch it, but that's what DVR and YouTube is for. Thank you.
Councillor Brown?
Thank you. I just have a couple of things. I want to shout out to the Merrimack River Greenway Trail for putting on an outstanding triathlon event. Councillor Rice Hawkins and I, and a third person, Calum O'Donnell, came in third in the relay. Our team name was "We Run This City," and I certainly hope that everyone here around this table participates next year, so we can all say that we all run, paddle, and bike this city. So many thanks to the Merrimack River Greenway Trail and Christine Vigneaux for putting on an outstanding event. The second thing I'd like to bring up, the school has started, and we are looking at students who are coming back from really tough years of COVID. The New York Times has said that students are behind almost five years. It's going to take them five years to catch up academically. So I want to highlight Rhea Patel, who is a Concord teenager struck by how difficult learning was during COVID. If it was difficult for her, an American teenager born in Concord and raised, she thought it would be even worse for students who are here as refugees. Last year, Rhea started a summer tutoring program using her own textbooks and the library and tutored 11 Concord students daily to review academic subjects. A year later, she's created a nonprofit called New American Scholars that supports refugee students in Nashua, Manchester, Concord, and the seacoast, and she tutored 75 students this summer. Right now, Rhea is looking for more tutors, preferably high school age, for this study, for a Study Buddy program. It's a virtual program going on right now where tutors, who are peers, are matched with a refugee student to meet online and study together one to two times per week. This provides academic support for the refugee child throughout the school year. It's easy, fun, and flexible. The dates and times are determined between the tutor and the student. According to Rhea's mom, the tutors get so much more out of this than the refugee students. You can learn more about this program through newamericanscholars.org. Thank you. Thank you, councillor.
Yes.
Just a quick reminder, hopefully everybody knows the primaries tomorrow, which our city clerk is getting prepared for, but I just wanted to note because I was talking to someone in my office today, and he didn't know it, so I think we need to remind people. The voting play, locations have changed for some of the wards. I know specifically Ward Four is now voting at Green Street. Ward Five is now voting at Krista McAuliffe School. Anything else?
Ward Seven's going to continue to vote at Abbott Downing. Ward Two is at the Barnetville Meadow. Do you want me to go through them all? Ward One is at the Immaculate Conception Church. Ward Two, Barnetville Meadow. Ward Three is at the Golf Course. Ward Four is at Green Street. Ward Five is at Krista McAuliffe. Ward Six, residents will vote at Christ the King Parish Hall. Ward Seven is Abbott Downing Elementary School. Ward Eight is the city, uh, Backtash Temple, excuse me. Ward Nine is the Citywide Community Center, and Ward Ten is Broken Ground Elementary School.
She gets an A+.
Yes.
Well done.
Hold were open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. as well.
And another reminder, your, because we changed some of the lines, you may be in a different ward than you were last year, so we sent out notifications to everybody, but double check, particularly if you were in Ward One or Ward Two, you might be in a different ward now.
Also Ward Nine.
And also Ward Three.
And eight. Yeah. They can call the court's office. Yeah. Everybody check.
All right. Any comments? No? None? So I have, there's a lot going on on the 24th Saturday. Not only can you walk, run, and paddle in Concord, you can fly. Wings and Wheels Day is Saturday, 9/24, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. There will also be food trucks, and there will be many, many displays highlighting the airport and STEM education, and lots of activities around flying and aerodynamic, aeroplanes. So anyway, so the 24th, you can start up at the Heights, go to the airport, check it out, have a little food truck, check out our, our aviation industry, then come on down for the arts. And I believe also, there is also a rail trail walk on the 24th up at Broken Ground that I believe starts earlier in the day at nine. So there's a lot to do in Concord this weekend. So with that, I don't think I have any more comments. Nope, and now it's time for the city manager.
So I have three items. One is a request and two comments, so let's do the request first. It's really more of an opportunity. So under your, in your agenda packet, item number 10 is the $741,000 we received due to the state surplus. You have an opportunity, we could simply put those dollars into the highway reserve for future paving, or what you can do, what General Services Director and I are recommending is use those dollars to pave Little Pond Road, a section of Cartahill, Lakeview, and a section of Oak Hill. And you can do that with this year's prices and get the, get worked on this year before the snow flies and we end up unfortunately probably plowing up some major sections. As you can see, if you're familiar with those roads, they're unraveling to some extent. So what I'd ask you to do, and this is unusual, but I think given the opportunity to save some taxpayers some money and get the roads into better shape, I'd ask that you vote to suspend your rules, take, and take the vote on it tonight to get this work done. If you do that, then I can line up through General Services Continental Paving to actually get that work completed. If you don't, then that, we would have to wait till next year to get that work done at different prices. So that's my request.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend our rules and allow the city manager to proceed forward with the $741,002.11 cents. Second.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Any comment? Seeing none, I believe, is that a two-thirds vote? So do we have the oral call?
We do not.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
All those seeing none, it's a unanimous vote. I'd also like to thank our Concord Legislative, Legislative delegation for voting the funds for additional funding for transportation that will be coming to the city. I believe Concord will receive a total of 1.7 million, half to be received in December and the second half in May in 2023. So that's more transportation dollars coming to the city that we'll receive in two, in two parts, and for that, I really do appreciate the folks across the way for sending some money down our way. So thank you very much. Yes?
So just a point of clarification on item number 10, that we just voted to suspend our rules. Do we now need to take that item up and have a pseudo-hearing or a full-fledged hearing?
Yes. So you voted to suspend the rules, you have the public hearing this evening now, and then you take a vote, you need two-thirds vote.
So Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Manager, when would be the appropriate time to finish going through those, those items that have been removed from consent and doing it at the end of that, or should we do it now?
I would, I recommend you do it now.
Okay. That being said, I would like to make a motion to take up item number 10 for a public hearing.
Second.
The motion is made and seconded. Any comment? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously.
So we just need to...
I will read the title. It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $741,002.11 as a transfer to capital from the general fund.
as a transfer to capital from the general fund appropriating $741,002.11 in the Highway Improvement Program for additional street repaving and accepting those funds as additional highway black grant aid apportionment from the state of New Hampshire for this purpose.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Okay. So I will, I need to open up a public hearing.
Yeah. Over here.
So with anyone from the public? Seeing none. Closed up public hearing and now the action phase made by Counselor Nighan in favor.
Part of voting on this, I just wanted to thank the city manager and staff for bringing this to our attention that we have the opportunity to do that this paving year. And I'm looking forward to seeing those roads done. I don't travel them often, but I know they're in need of repair. So thank you very much.
Counselor Pierce?
Note, this appropriation from the state has no effect on the Concord taxpayers. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm going to be supporting this effort mostly because this has been a few years now that the residents of Ward Three, now in Ward Five, have been asking for this stretch of road to be paved. It is not something that we were able to undertake, especially when the original requests were coming in, when we decided to take on Bog Road. And then there is, has been some construction in the area, particularly around Carter Hill that we discussed during the budget season last year. And when you combine all of these efforts and all of the paving across the city, it has always been a project that's just been push, push, push. So I'm very grateful to the state, the highway fund, that we're able to do this and wholeheartedly support this and appreciate the support of the council as well.
Other comments? Counselor Fantasy?
I think this is a great project to move forward. I just hope we make sure that I can still get my apples at Carter Hill during construction.
The court lines are not ready yet, but they will.
I'm aware.
Okay. Keep an eye on it.
And I travel Oak Hill a lot in that that road is on here. And if anyone has traveled that, that road is definitely needing to be built. And just to be clear, this isn't repaving. We're rebuilding these roads. So this is a great opportunity for the city to get these done. Any other comments?
I'd just like to say, I've been in touch with some residents who are now Ward Five residents talking about this road. And I bike Little Pond Road and it is treacherous. So this is very welcome. They were prepared to come, multiple residents were prepared to come for a public hearing and support of this next month. So they'll be thrilled to find out that it was supported by council tonight. Thank you.
Please let them, everyone, know that we moved this forward in this manner to save the city money and to get these roads done as quickly as possible. So yes, Counselor.
Move approval? We already have.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, I think we did.
Yeah, we did. We already have.
Public hearing and now you can discussion and now you can vote.
Okay. So we, sorry. So we've had, the motion was made by Counselor Nighan, seconded by Counselor Todd. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none. It's unanimous. Motion passes. So now...
I still have two comments.
You still have two comments. You said three, that's right.
I said three. That was one. The other two go pretty fast. The next item was I'd like to introduce Deputy City Manager Carlos Baia and thank him for his years of service. This is his last meeting. And as a thank you to him, I told him we'd keep this really short. And he is a man of brevity.
I'm a very brief man. Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of council, Tom, Janice. I would love to just say thank you. Thank you to Tom for hiring me 15 years ago. Thank you to the great city councils that we've had over those years, including this one. When Tom and I travel and we go to city manager conferences, we are stunned by the level of discord and dysfunction of other city councils. And we were always proud to say how well this city council leads this community. That's something that you should be proud of because it improves morale for the rest of us and makes us really want to stay here. And I've been here for the 15 years because this has been a great community led by great people. And I'm looking forward to the next chapter in my life with my family. I'm looking forward to being in shorts in January, more than anything probably. And I do welcome anyone from the community to stop by and visit me. I'm in the greater Tampa area, so please look me up and I'd be happy to give you a tour of our city of Temple Terrace. So again, thank you very much. And thank you to the great team and the staff that's been wonderful to work with over these years. So thank you.
Thank you, Carlos.
Thank you, Carlos.
Council meeting in January, Downing.
I think we should follow, you know, Mr. Baia's suggestion and make shorts, the dress code for the city employees.
In January?
January, yeah.
And lastly, just to follow up with Counselor Chaplin was discussing earlier regarding the multicultural festival. If you'd like the opportunity, we have our public information officers. Stephanie Breton would be glad to take your picture and would like to post these. You can do it as a group, you can do it individually, however you'd like to do it, but we can do that at the end of the meeting if you like. So we have that, we can do that.
That's for welcome.
Okay?
Welcome, ma'am?
Yes.
All right.
That was it? That was three?
That's three. All right. So staying on target here when the next is the consent?
Consideration for suspense. That's correct.
And we've had two items pulled.
So two items were pulled from consent. The first item was pulled by Counselor Brown. Item number 24 is a report from the Deputy City Manager of Finance recommending approval of the proposed 2023 membership and daily rates for Beaver Meadow Golf Course as recommended by the Golf Course Advisory Committee.
Yes, thank you. And I pulled this from consent because during budget and when I did a tour with the head pro, Phil Davis, we talked about, you know, how great the course was. And I was surprised to find that there is no difference in rate for Concord residents. And I feel that that's very important, that there is a lot of funds, general obligation bonds that go towards the golf course and not everyone golfs. But those Concord residents that do should get a better rate. So I feel very strongly about this. You know, when out of town people go and use our pools, they pay $5 to use the pool. And that's one time. And if they were to use the pool for the summer, I believe it's $120. So Concord taxpayers are paying. This is a municipal golf course. They should receive a benefit when they play there.
Thank you. Any comments? So that, Counselor Fantasy?
Sure. So to Counselor Brown's question or comment, this was discussed last month at the Beaver Meadow Advisory Committee. And the issue of doing differential rates for residents versus non-residents was brought up. And the discussion was about that this had been done in the past. And what was found at the golf course was when they started to differentiate based on residency, they found that they actually lost a number of members from outside of the city. And as a result, they ended up going back to one rate rather than having the differential because they found it actually led to people going away from the golf course and going somewhere else. So based on that experience and looking at rates, both daily fee rates and membership rates at other, what they consider to be the competitors in the market, the recommendation unanimously from the Beaver Meadow Advisory Committee was to stay with just one rate for residents and non-residents, both at the daily fee and at the membership level.
Further comment?
Counselor Hawkins?
Rice Hawkins? Oh, thank you. My comment may change in relation to what Counselor Fantasy just said. Counselor Fantasy, could you share whether or not that's because our rates were higher than other locations? Because I noticed the membership fees are about $300 less than area competitors. Our daily rates are just like four bucks less. But I'm just curious if, why we would have lost them if our rates are still lower, unless they were higher at the time they tried that.
I will defer to somebody else. I don't know. It was 10 years ago, I think, that they changed back or 15 years ago. So I don't know specifically what the rates were in relation to the competitors at that point. But the unanimous, and we talked about this in detail because the members of the Beaver Meadow Advisory Committee understood that this is one of the issues that was raised by members of the council. And I think we had a pretty good discussion about the pros and cons of moving in that direction. And the unanimous recommendation was to stay with just the single rate.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Kedovic?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I was not at the meeting because I was absent. So I wasn't there for the discussion to hear the committee say it. But I can tell from a historic perspective, because I was on the committee as a non-counselor at the time that the rates were, the residential differential was removed. And it had to do with saturation of the marketplace. At that time, you had Canterbury Country Club that had been online for about two or three years. Everybody had received a large weather hit that year. We had the Symmetra Tour that came in and we had lost a couple of our greens entirely. And because of that, there was an absolute shift of members all across the whole area. So this includes people going to Dairy Field and Dustin and Loudoun Country Club and Canterbury and Plazua and now Pembroke Pines. Concord Country Club is a little bit different because they do work on a waiting list in order to get into their club. Lockmere Country Club had also relatively been new in the last five, 10 years of that time period when this had changed. So there, it really had to do with, there was so much product, so close within 20 minutes of Beaver Meadow Golf Course, that the rate differential between the two just didn't seem to matter. So at the same time, the Golf Course Advisory Board was being run through General Services at the time and not through the Recreation Department, though it was at the same period that the Recreation Department was going to be taking over the golf course. And it was advised by Rec Advisory Board that they were seeing that they were also getting rid of some of the differential on their services and programs across the city. And it was their recommendation as well to do so, to remove the differential. And that was why the decision was made. The market has not changed. All of those golf courses still exist. And we think that it's important as a municipal course that we offer a better, more affordable product than anyone else in the marketplace.
Counselor Pierce?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. I was wondering if Counselor Brown had some idea or some suggested rate changes and what the effects on the revenue would be.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I did make a few calls today to call around to some of the other golf courses. And I found that according to the report, our young adult, it's projected that Pembroke and Canterbury are at 1,325. In fact, those numbers are actually 1,575. So they are significantly more than Beaver Meadow is projected at, was approved for the young adult, for 975. So that is significantly lower. And, you know, I appreciate the councilors commenting that it was a number of years ago. But I want to say it was a number of years ago. And we are looking at spending half a million dollars on the design of a clubhouse. We are asking taxpayers to pay four to five million dollars on a clubhouse. We are spending over two and a half million dollars on irrigation alone. So while we are providing a stellar golf course, we are asking taxpayers to foot that bill. So we should be giving the taxpayers a break.
Counselor Rice Hawkins?
Thank you. I'll go back to my original comment. I would say if it was a motion by Counselor Brown to establish a resident discount, then I would be happy to second it.
I did not hear that motion. Is that a motion?
Yes, I make a motion.
To establish?
To establish a residency rate that reflects these rates. And I would like a non-residency rate to match the rates of our, of neighboring golf courses.
And will you be seconding that?
May I suggest that we send it back to the committee to establish the rate, but to have a resident rate?
Thank you. That's an excellent suggestion.
So the motion has been made by Counselor Brown to send, are you sending back the recommendation from the golf committee? Do you come back with new numbers?
I would, I...
The residential rate?
I believe it, maybe it should go to fees and schedules. Is that a better place to look at? I think that the Fees and Schedules Committee to look at the rates.
So the motion has been made.
Yes.
And seconded by Counselor Rice Hawkins. Is there discussion? Counselor Kedovic?
I will not be supporting this motion as a representative of the Golf Advisory Board that has worked on this for two months, even though myself, it was only one. Having this item pulled from consent at the last minute when the council protocol is that these are removed at noon so that we can have the proper staff and committee members here in order to answer questions for people. I'm not supporting this, but thanks.
Counselor Fantasy?
Thank you. I will not be supporting this motion. I was there. We spent two meetings. We took this up first in, I believe it's the August meeting. No, sorry, July. We took this up at the July meeting and we spent more than an hour going through, looking at what other courses had done this year, what we were projecting for next year. We had a, you know, a very long discussion. We had a number of different options. The committee did not agree at the end of the first meeting. So we agreed to take it up again at our August meeting, at which point we actually had the Director of Golf come back with some different rate structures than what we had spoken about previously. I'll tell you, we increased from what we were initially looking at based on what was happening in the market. So I think that the committee spent a significant amount of time looking at our competitors in the market. For the first time this year in a number of years, we actually did the daily fees at the same time we did the membership rates because we thought it was important to kind of look at the full spectrum of our revenue and what we were going to be doing to make sure that we were being consistent on the daily fee side and on the membership side. So I won't be supporting this motion. I believe that the advisory committee did exactly what we appoint them to do and what we expect them to do. And I think they put in quite a bit of effort to get what I think is a very good schedule of rates for next year.
Further comment? Counselor Chaplin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. I also will not be voting in favor of this amendment or this motion. I think we place a great deal of faith in our citizen committees to do the groundwork and to work with city staff to make sound, practical recommendations for the city. And I think that we need to, you know, place our faith in the Golf Course Advisory Committee because they've been living and drinking and sleeping this. And I think that this is their area of expertise, working with staff. I also am concerned that because this was pulled at the last minute, that there is no city staff here to respond. Mr. LeBrun, I don't think is here.
No.
You know? And so I'm concerned about making a significant change like this in that vacuum. And third, it's my understanding that, and I'll defer to Counselor Fantasy being on the committee and Counselor Kedovic, that our goal has been to move the golf courts towards being self-sustaining to the greatest degree possible. And so I think any fee changes need to be very carefully considered in light of that. In fact, our, you know, our golf fund has in fact paid back to the general fund in the last several years. And I think that's a goal that we have striven for and a goal that we've tried to sustain. Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem.
Further comment? Counselor Rice Hawkins?
Thank you. Would a member of the golf committee share how many of our memberships are Concord residents? Do we have that breakdown yet?
I don't think we keep that number. I'm not 100% sure.
Thank you for the follow-up. Thank you for the follow-up. That is correct, because that was asked about during the budget season as well, that we don't even keep numbers on how many Concord residents are using the golf course versus out of Tanners. It's one of the questions that came up in relation to a resident discount. So I feel like I do trust the committee process, but there are a couple of questions that I had or that came up through that budget process that community members raised that I don't feel like was addressed here. And I do understand that there are discounts built into the September schedule for folks, the way it's structured, to allow those discounts. But I also don't see that we couldn't prolong it by one month and get some of these answers to address these issues. So I would suggest we look at it. I mean, I think Counsel Brown makes a really good point. Taxpayers are footing the bill for investments, and if our taxpayers are paying, then they should get some additional benefits out of that.
Counselor Todd?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just taking off from Counsel Chaplin's comments, with which I agree, I would add that I think that the committee must be doing something right, because if we look at the membership rates update chart in the report, I'm noting that most of the memberships have increased fairly significantly over the years, or they've certainly at least remained stable. So I believe that that shows that the committee is doing very well in terms of its guidance and recommendations going forward. I would say also that, to my mind, this is not really necessarily a time to make additional changes. We're already increasing the rates, and I would rather prefer personally to have the committee continue to review the membership as we go forward into the new rates that are suggested here, and then perhaps revisit this at a later time, when we'd have a greater understanding of what the financial impact might be of a further reduction of those rates at this point. Thank you.
Counselor Pierce?
I would ask that we move the question, please.
I think we're almost done with comments, so I won't take the motion if it's agreeable. Further comments? Counselor McNamara?
Thank you, Madam Protem. I also am a little concerned that we want to build our committees, and this is kind of like a slight to a committee who it sounds like has worked very hard on this, and I'm concerned that people won't feel that their work is valued. And I would, I agree with Counsel, thank you, Counsel Todd, that I'd like to come back and revisit and see if those fee hikes, how they've worked in our financial system next year. I don't, will not support this.
Okay, any further comments? Seeing none. I also will not be supporting the motion because I do value the work of our citizen advisory committees and of our staff, and it seems, appears, the golf advisory committee has worked very hard and diligently on this, on this recommendation, along with our city staff, and the golf course is moving in the right direction. And I think the citizen users, if we are talking about the benefit to the taxpayer, I think to have a golf course that we can all be proud of, that more people are joining and more people are using, I think that's a benefit to the golf course. And, I mean, we can go down this rabbit hole for every service that we offer to this city, because not every citizen uses the pool, or ice skates, or any number of other things. So I will not be supporting this motion. So if there are no other comments?
Just one more quick comment, Your Honor. I actually had a chance to speak with Mr. Davis during the break, and similar to one of Counsel Brown's concerns about making sure there's something given back to the general user of the golf course, Mr. Davis explained to me a number of different initiatives and efforts that the golf course has undertaken for Concord residents. Maybe at a future date, he can come back and just share some of those developments with us, some of the, what do you call it, adolescent programming and a few other things that I was unaware of. So it might be a great opportunity for all of us to become more familiar with the golf course.
Thank you. All right. Ready for the vote? Motion has been made by Counselor Brown, and seconded by Counsel Rice Hawkins. Clerk, will you please read the motion?
Look, it changed up a little bit, but Counselor Brown moved to send the report back to the Golf Course Advisory Committee to consider establishing residency rates that were lower than other rates established.
If you're in favor of that, you'll be voting yes. If you're not in favor, you'll be voting no. So I think we'll just do voice vote. So all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against?
No.
No.
I think the nays have it. Motion fails.
I move to accept the report.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Against?
No.
Okay, so, moving on.
So the next item that was pulled from consent was pulled from Counsel, by Counsel Rice Hawkins. It's a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an application to the New Hampshire Department of Justice for American Rescue Plan Act Initiative Grant Program for Funding Designated to Address Violent Crimes on the Trail Systems and Conservation Areas Within the City.
Counsel Rice Hawkins?
Thank you. Thank you, counsel, for entertaining this request. So I struggled a little bit with this, this item, and I'll tell you why. These are using American Rescue Plan dollars for, specifically for coming out of COVID response. I feel like we have a lot of needs in our community, so I'm a little bit concerned about how we're going to use those dollars and what priorities we're putting them toward. I do think that there are elements of this proposal that I like, and I can see some of the justification and reasoning behind it. I did submit several questions that are being worked on around just a total count by year of, and a list of violent crimes on the trail systems and conservation areas from 2019 to present, whether or not we have other city departments that have ATVs that are not in regular use day-to-day, and if there is an option for cross-department sharing, whether the plan to use the ATVs are for routine, uniform patrols on trails, investigations or both, and then what is the general scope of projects and activities the city is allowed to apply for under this particular grant. The last one I ask is what's the deadline for the grant application? I also don't want us to miss an opportunity for federal dollars. So my recommendation is that we do move forward and accept this report tonight, but that we also direct this conversation back to Public Safety Advisory Board, and particularly another committee that deals with trails, because we are talking about kind of how public safety will operate in those spaces. I think, like, the investigations part makes a lot of sense, but like, the patrolling and how that would be implemented, and then just generally the priority of COVID dollar, response dollars for this need. We've got a lot of needs in the city. I would appreciate a little bit more of a committee process around this conversation, and was delighted to hear several council members reference the strength and need for our committee process a moment ago. So that would be my recommendation. We allow the department to move forward, so we don't lose this opportunity, but we also have some more dialogue and get those questions back in the meantime.
So you're just making comments, or are you making a motion?
Why don't I start at comments first and see if there are any reflections, and then I'm happy to make a motion to that effect. Would you like me to make the motion first?
Counsel Kretovic?
I don't know what the motion's going to be, but I was actually very excited to see this. It hasn't been that long ago since a person on the trail in Ward III, and I don't want to say what trail, I'm just gonna, it's in Ward III, found a backpack full of hypodermic needles, not on any of the end roads, deep end, and I, it was scary to think that that was just sitting out there on a trail, that children, families, dogs, et cetera, were there, and this was hypodermic needles spread out all over the area. This is the type of action that I could see. We can call our police department, whether it's the fire department, police department, whoever goes out there to clean that up. This is a safety issue in our community, and when we're not paying attention to it and we're not addressing it, that's a problem. I actually saw this as quick response to something that is a serious growing concern in our, in our community, on our trails, that people are now taking up more so because of COVID. But I do appreciate where you're coming from. I was actually excited to see this move forward.
Further comment? Seeing none. What do you want to do, counselor?
Well, I'm happy to make the motion. I don't believe I'll be getting a second, but I would say, we just came out of Public Safety Advisory Board with the annual report. We have had some obviously high-profile, very sad news in our community. But as a whole, the numbers don't actually project this kind of activity, and I think with so many issues arising from COVID, I just want to make sure that we have used our committee process to really think about the priorities we want to set, and also how we had envisioned a role like this, and whether or not the police department or another staff member might be appropriate for some of these roles. We are talking about a pickup truck, a trailer, and two ATVs, so it is a pretty substantial investment. Again, it might be worth it, but I think we've got some time to have that conversation as well.
Counselor Nyan?
Thank you. I think it is worth it, and I move to accept the report and purchase the items mentioned in the report.
There's a resolution.
Second.
So Counselor Nyan has moved to accept a report. Counsel Todd has moved to second.
It's a resolution.
The resolution?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
He said report. It's a resolution.
And comment? Counselor Fennessy?
I had more of a question, and I think it's for the city manager, because I don't see anybody here from police. Does the department currently have apparatus or vehicles that allow them to patrol in any way, our conserva, I'll say, off-road vehicles for our conservation areas?
No. Well, we do have, I think this is, Counsel Rice Hawkins has really pointed out, this is an emergency issue. I mean, if you, if you think, just step, step down the street a little bit for a couple of years, and the idea is that, you know, you're going to have a Merrimack River Greenway Trail, and you're gonna have, it's gonna be paved, and you're gonna be having numerous people from, from within the community and from outside the community coming in and out. I think there's gonna be expectation in this community that somebody is gonna be patrolling that. And I don't mean patrol in the sense of police patrol, but be actively out there, be able to respond to incidents. So I think this is, to me, it's a natural progression of whether it's Police Department or Park and Recreation, or the Fire Department, there has to be some sort of means to provide services to folks. Someone's gonna fall and break their ankle, someone's gonna, I mean, if you look, I've talked to some professionals over the weekend about the record numbers of people being hauled out of the mountains on trail systems that should not have to be hauled out of the mountains, decided to wear their Chuck Taylors or flip-flops and take a hike up, you know, Cannon Mountain. I mean, it just, it boggles your mind what people are doing out there without thinking about it. And I think, but we ultimately are gonna have responsibility to respond to those things, whether it's a medical emergency or some sort of criminal activity. So we're going in this direction anyways. So I think the question's gonna be, do we take the opportunity where this fund's available to do something like this now? I would expect, just as Counsel Rice Hawkins was saying, that the Police Department to work with Park and Recreation and, and the Park and Recreation Advisory Committee, and keep Public Safety Advisory Committee informed about what they're doing, how they're doing it, why they're doing it. But this is gonna be, and I think this is a good, because this is, this is, it's gonna show that there's gonna be more interest in the community, more use of those trails. I don't think we're ever going back to the time now that people have discovered those trail systems. They're gonna keep using them, and I think that's good. The more activity out there, I think is going to be healthier for the community also. So that's the direction I believe the Police Department wants to go, and I think it makes sense.
Yes, Counsel Chaplin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think Counsel Rice Hawkins' points are well taken. To the city manager's points, I have to say that I've already heard from people as we look forward to creating the rail trails, as we look forward to the Merrimack River Greenway Trail being extended, people have expressed concern about what the activity is on the trails, particularly those who are butters, you know, where the trail's going to go, you know, alongside their property lines. So in that sense, I think this is a very proactive move on part of the Police Department. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other comments? And I will be supporting Counsel Nyan's motion. I believe this is a great public safety, that we were able to use these funds to get all-terrain vehicles and ATVs to be on these trails, because I think there is still a level with users of just being a little bit uncomfortable, and just having someone else with eyes on those trails, I think sends a great message to the users of the trails, and also to have other people come from outside our community to use our trails, that we, we really take them in a high regard, that they're not just there and forgotten about. I do appreciate Counselor Rice Hawkins' remarks, but we both sit on the Public Safety Committee. I think this is something perhaps you could bring forward to the chair if you want the committee to address some of these items as an agenda item. But I think we have an opportunity now to move quickly, to do something that is concrete for the public safety of our growing trail system. Hanny Miles, is that? Hady?
Hady denied.
Yeah, it keeps growing. It keeps growing. So with that, any more comments? Counsel Rice Hawkins?
Thank you, and thank you for your remark just now, Counsel Richard. That is essentially my goal here. I do think Public Safety Advisory Board and then those committees that oversee the trails should have this conversation, and so as we're approving dollars and funds and investing in equipment, and basically setting up policies around that, it should be a larger community conversation about what we would like to see there. So I'm, I thought we would need to refer to PSAB, but I'm happy to just ask that it be on the agenda as well.
I, I don't think we need to refer it, since I think we have a motion that we're gonna accept this resolution, and I think as the committee member, you can bring up items that you think the committee should be looking at. So, but I think this is a need that the public safety need, that the city needs now, and that we can move forward now on this. And I trust our staff and everyone who's put work into this on how these dollars should be used for our trail systems. So, any other comments? Seeing none. Is this a real call vote for the resolution?
It does not.
Okay, so would you like to read, Counsel Nyan's?
He moved approval of the resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an application to the New Hampshire Department of Justice for American Rescue Plan Act Initiative Grant Program for Funding Designated to Address Violent Crimes on Trail Systems and Conservation Areas Within the City.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So if you're in favor on that motion, you're voting yes. If you're not, you'd be voting no. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Seeing none. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So, I think, are we at the air, Tom? I think we're ready for not Counselor Nyan, but someone to make.
Move that we adjourn, Your Honor.
Second.
Counselor Chaplin moves to adjourn, and seconded by Counsel Fennessy. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? None seeing, and, yep, and if you want to stay, maybe we can do a group photo, and those who want an individual photo. Okay.